We're going to come out of recess.
Second?
I'm Tom.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are out of recess. So before we begin our 7:10 hearing, we have minutes to approve. And they are from 8:15, 19, 9, 19, 19, and 10:17, 19. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as written and submitted for those three particular dates?
Motion to accept is noted.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Minutes have been accepted. Two minutes.
Chairman, I've got 7:10.
Thank you so much. I was just reading through some paperwork. So we have a 7:10 application. It is applicant Lynn Buregard requesting an variance under section 5.4 of the zoning bylaws to provide relief from the required 20-foot front yard setback for property located at 15 Ward Street, Auburn, Mass., map 13, parcel 140. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Motion open. Second?
All in favor? Is the applicant present? Ma'am, if you could approach the lectern, introduce yourself, give us an overview of the project. Explain what you'd like to accomplish.[204.01][204.01](laughing) We won't bite. Nobody will yell at you, so you'll be okay. Do I have a Butters present for this hearing also? Any Butters present for this particular hearing? No? Okay. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Lynn Buregard. So I'm requesting a variance. And you said "front yard," 20 feet from the...
Well, this is how it was written in my description of the request.
So I wish to put an addition on to my house, but there's an easement on the side of my house, Earl Street.
Okay.
And I guess it's a... The addition should be 20 feet from the road. That's why they denied the permit, because they said it wasn't 20 feet from the road, but there is no road. It's just an easement. So it would be at least 10 feet from that boundary. And so I'd like to put the addition up. There is no road. It's a paper road. And that's not the front of my house. It's the side. The street runs along this.
Okay, so I'm going to just kind of... So that's a... It's considered a front yard setback as far as the town is concerned, but you are going to the side yard?
Yes.
Front yard's off of Ward Street. And the building's already there. There's no addition going in the front.
It's all on the side.
Right, okay.
The side and the back, mostly the back.
Mostly the back.
Okay, so if you're satisfied with your statement, I'm going to send it over to the board members for individual questions. Is that all right?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Cussie?
We have a written statement there that people can read, right?
Yeah, we actually have your written statement submitted, but I'd like to ask questions directly to the applicant. Okay, thank you. Mr. Chacolo?
Hi. As written with that paper road, the addition you're thinking of putting on, the... What you feel would be the side yard would be considered the front yard of a...
To Earl Street.
...paper road.
Okay.
So you would need 20 feet there.
But it's a non-road. I mean, I'm not sure what the issue is because...
I think there's a whole legal matter that is probably going to have to be settled. And this is a layman's opinion.
So we went to a lawyer and consulted a lawyer. And I guess we didn't... It was more about the driveway, because we were going to use part of that, the easement, as our driveway. And so we went and got legal advice. And they told us that as long as you were able to pass and repass on the easement, that it wouldn't be an issue.
I think it's...
As long as people had access to pass and repass, it wasn't an issue. And nowhere along the lines did they ever say anything about the structure.
About what?
The structure, the house itself, being close, you know, being that close.
There's two separate issues there.
Right. But I'm just saying, it's not...
Through the chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
Could I provide Town Council's letter to the applicant, just so they can review it?
Did they... Did or did not receive a copy of that?
I am not sure they did.
Okay.
So I can provide that?
Yeah, I mean, I would certainly think that that should have been provided, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought so.
So what you're receiving now from the law office of Robert Hennigan, this is our town attorney's opinion, also with some commentary, I believe, or observation with William Coyle, And again, I think this specifically speaks to the driveway part of the project.
Through the chair, if I may. I believe Town Council did touch on the front yard setback as well.
Right.
You have our lawyers on?
This lawyer has allies.
Correct.
Have a chance to read through that? So just for the record while we're going through this, we have an opinion letter from the town attorney. And I believe that you may have sought out an opinion of your own from a local law office. So we also received this from the law offices of Roach and Wren with a dissenting opinion, I guess, if you will. Mr. Jones, do you have any comments or questions you want to add?
Sure. I've looked over both of the opinions, and I think reasonable minds can disagree as to the driveway. I think the addition might be more problematic, though, with that 10.1-foot setback. So I guess my biggest question for you would be, have you explored going to land court or possibly another court to have the paper street eliminated so that you could assume that next 20 feet of land?
When the lawyer looked up that stuff, that easement was established in 1905 when the whole Packerchog Heights development was put in. So his comment was that you'd have to get permission from everybody who was part of that Packerchog Heights, which didn't seem to be a reasonable course of action. It seemed more reasonable for this board to grant a waiver in that it's not a street, it's just a wooded area now, and to be less than 20 feet from that. I think the building we're proposing is about 11 and 1/2 feet from the line at one end and maybe 13 feet from the other end. And that it didn't seem that that's impacting anybody. In fact, it's improving the neighborhood. So that, you know, the part of the structure being 20 feet, that it's a main road, is really, it's not a road, you know? It's...
If I may, I hear what you're saying. Because there's no pavement, there's no gravel, it seems ludicrous to you to call this a street.
Right. And since 1905, when it was established?
When I'm... Not my law office, I totally agree with you, but, you know, legally, I think paper street is a street, and that's why you're here in the first place.
Right.
And that's what makes the addition more challenging. And in terms of the driveway, you're improving it. You're making it more street-like. You're making it more usable for yourself than anybody who might want to use that stretch of driveway that you would be putting on that paper street. But the setback in terms of the house is tougher. And that's why I ask if you had explored just having the paper street eliminated by a court.
They wouldn't even do the records, to go back into the records. They...
He thought it would be a lot of time and effort to do that. And, you know, that's what I thought the zoning board was for, is to look at things and say, is this reasonable or unreasonable? And to grant a variance. You know, you talk about the law, and I realize the law, and that's why we're here, because it couldn't be approved without some variance. And we were hoping that that's what this board would do, would look at it and say, this is reasonable, and grant us permission to be less than 20 feet from the line. Because it, you know, it's not... If we were asking to build out into the front of the house and to the street that's there, Ward Street, that would be one thing. This is... It just seems that it's reasonable to allow that to happen.
So I guess my follow-up question would be, is there any chance at all that the town or somebody would want to improve this paper street and make it an actual street?
I don't see why.
It's only about, let me see...
Single block.
Maybe 160 feet, two house lots, our house lot and the house behind us. It goes between Lexington and Ward. And...
There would be no reason to have a street there.
Mr. Chairman? Answer to that question, from viewing the property, there is no chance that you can put another dwelling in that area. It is, as the climate said, it goes from Ward Street to Lexington Street. There are houses on either side, and there is no way you are going to get another structure in there. As a paper road, I can see where it would be on paper there, and somebody could say, that's fine. But there's no way anybody is going to improve that land.
I think maybe you misunderstood, because my voice is so terrible today. But I was talking about if someone were to improve it, not with a dwelling, but make a passable, drivable road out of that paper street.
No reason for it.
That would be very, very unlikely. They would have to take down a couple of very, very big trees in the way. Be very unlikely that anybody would be doing anything with that land currently. That's the holdup is the fact that it's on paper.
Nobody's done anything with the land. 1905.
Yeah, I agree that if you look at a map, there's no readily apparent reason for having a paper street there.
I wonder why they did it.
Chairman, if I may?
You may.
So two quick... Just one quick administrative piece. I see that Ms. Roach has stepped back.
Yes.
So in order for us, as we move forward, to try to avoid a supermajority need, if we want to bring one of the alternates forward...
Yeah, I was going to explain that to them when the time came, but I appreciate that.
No worries. All right, then I won't step in. You've got it. But if I may, on this case, in summary, and I'm not trying to speed through this, but two things I just want to comment on. Mr. Hennigan, who is Town Council, had provided this to the town early November. I'm concerned that, quite frankly, the applicants are just receiving it this evening. I feel it puts them in slight disadvantage in just receiving this information this evening. I also think that this is... Listening to the applicants and your thoughtful comments, I mean, the zoning board certainly does have a purpose to take a look and judge at reasonableness on a piece of property. The challenge I see before us is that there is a certain jurisdiction that's out of our view here. Meaning that we can certainly debate whether or not this is a road and what could potentially come of it. I did view the property. My concern with this is that out of our view is our ability to essentially waive the process that was suggested to you initially. Certainly tedious, probably almost impractical to search down everyone and basically... But I'm not confident that this board would have the authority to essentially waive the rights of all of those folks that actually have access and have been granted rights to this easement. The concern for that is, there's a practical notion here, and then there's, I think, a logistic as well as a litigious notion here. The litigious notion here is that we can't change the fact that this is a paper road and that other folks, other than yourself and folks that didn't show up here tonight, have rights to that. We don't have the authority, in my view, to waive those rights in any way. That would be a litigious process that would be out of our view. And I think you eloquently described how impractical that may be. But even that being the case, our ability to grant... And I don't think that there's a question on whether or not what you're trying to accomplish is reasonable. I also don't think there's a question of whether or not you need relief to do that. But our ability to provide that relief would be contingent upon whether or not that there would be a litigious concern later. And our Town Council... So we have been provided two different legal opinions this evening, one of which sounds like you had sought their counsel at Roach and Wren, and the other from the town attorney. I can only speak for myself and suggest that, again, irrespective of legal opinions, I don't believe that this board would have the authority to waive the right of Butters that have right to that easement. Whether or not it's practical that they would want to use it, or whether or not it's bettering the neighborhood, I mean, it's a challenge for me to go in that direction, but I don't think we have the authority to do that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, I think we can explore that. So I want to break this down a little bit, but first, I want to actually ask Caitlin if you have any questions or concerns for the applicant or the board.
All my questions have been asked.
Okay. So I see this as a...
If I may, through the chair, excuse me, not to interrupt you. Can I make the applicant aware of the mandatory findings? And that may help them present their case a little better if they know what the mandatory findings of a variance are.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I'm not sure they do. Thank you.
While he does that, so I'm just going to, for our discussion, make the suggestion for board members to consider, given that the applicant is seeing the Town Council's letter for the first time this evening...
To allow it.
I would, for one, be in favor of giving them an opportunity to step back without prejudice and rethink their approach to this, given the Town Council's position and given the fact that they probably want some time to digest that decision.
I don't disagree with you. So I see, you know, we have the...
What's it say?
It's the layers of the onion here, I see. You know, we're talking about the building permit itself, which I personally don't have a problem with, but again, I don't want to influence anybody's opinion. The driveway concern, I mean, we've been through this before. One that comes to mind is the barber shop over on Oxford Street that actually has the old, original Main Street running through it. And this is before most of you were on the board. This is when, I think, Mr. Cussie and I actually had this hearing. The owner of that particular building came forward and needed to take care of some... Really, it was just a legal matter in terms of, you know, clarifying the fact that this road actually drove through his building. And it took three or four hearings to actually straighten it out. But, you know, there are several paper roads in town that are under the same circumstance that we've dealt with in the past. And I know that they are case by case, but, you know, based on Mr. Chacolo's observations of it not really being a practical road to develop, my question would really be to you is, does it have to be a finished driveway? I mean, could you really just kind of clear the property a little bit and just put some gravel down or something like that?
Well, one of the other options is we could put the driveway coming from the other direction. If we put on the addition, the driveway could come from the opposite end.
See, I personally have to say that I don't have a problem with either of them, even with the paper road, because, quite honestly, it's a paper road from 1905. It could literally sit there for the next 1,000 years and just not do anything. Right? So that's one thing I see. And if they tar it, and if somebody wants to develop it, it's not really an impediment to the development of that road again. It's just tar. I mean, so, you know, they've actually made it easier for them to develop that road again, in theory, to get a piece of equipment down there, or whatever it might be. And it's not really blocking that road.
And if that did happen, however likely or unlikely it might be, if that did happen, then you have... You are faced with essentially not being able to honor any kind of variance that would be needed because of the setback. Because now it's the front yard. So you can't honor any variance that you would need if that happens. There are so many balls in the air here.
Right.
That one thing does affect the other.
You're right. At first glance, it just appears like it's a pretty simple issue, quite honestly. And then, as you more kind of delve into it, you see that there are a few other issues underlying.
Is this... Caleb, if I might?
Please, go right ahead.
Caleb, is this a separate strip of land between the owned and surveyed land of the
This is a street that wasn't constructed. So it's surveyed as a street. There are probably hundreds of people that have rights to it.
Yeah.
They have...
It's not just the... Excuse me. It's not just the immediate people that reside on it. You've got many Butters.
If they improve it and other people want to use it, they have rights to use it.
Right. So that's one thing that's understandable and clear, like Caleb makes a very valid point. I actually know of another circumstance in town where a driveway overlaps somebody else's property by about 3 feet. And really, in theory, they could go and park their car right on there if they want, and that owner can't really say anything about it. You know, it's basically like parking on the side of a street, if you will. So that's something to consider also. I mean, would it be feasible? And again, I am not trying to create... I understand that you've got a lot of time and money invested into this project. Could you just push the addition back 10 feet? Would it be practical based on the structure, or no?
It's not practical.
No.
Okay. And I'm just trying to come up with certain ways to try to go around these things, really, you know? My... As the board, we always said, we try to help, not impede, you know?
It seems like this could be done in stages and get different approvals. The first approval is to be within 20 feet from that paper road. And that, to me, doesn't seem to be a big stretch. The other part would be the driveway. If the driveway would be encroaching on the paper street, or would we need to put it someplace else? Because our driveway now is on the other side of the house.
And on the other side of this strip of land known as the street, there is, I'm assuming, there's a neighbor, correct?
Yep.
So if you all got together and you just decided to, let's just say, clear all the trees out and level it out and grow grass there, what's the difference? I mean, I'm just asking, really, honestly.
Nothing until it...
Until somebody else... Right, so they could be spending money on the property.
Right, until somebody else says, I'm going to park on your grass.
Right. So in theory, then if they wanted to develop it and put the driveway on, they're spending that money, knowing there's a possibility they could lose it.
I think the way the land is now, where they would be putting that driveway, it's not passable, because I believe the driveway would replace trees, which, of course, one cannot walk through. Am I correct in that assumption?
That it would replace trees?
You would have to cut down...
Not mine. Not that section. There's some trees in the paper road.
Trees in the back.
Yes, but not on the section that we're talking about.
No, we wouldn't cut those trees.
Oh, you wouldn't? Oh, okay.
If...
It's impassable now anyways, because there were trees on that paper road. I mean...
On the other end, towards the Lexington end, there's a bunch of trees.
So in...
So you couldn't drive right through.
So where the driveway would sit on this paper road would actually be more passable, the freshly paved section would be more passable than it would be without the driveway?
Right, because there's also a lip at the road that goes, you know, you couldn't drive down there. It drops off about 6 or 7 feet. So we'd like to just level that.
Mr. Chairman?
Plant grass, if you want.
Yes?
I think that we're trying to justify, you know, could it be done, should it be done? For me, what they're asking for this evening is their answer for the 20-foot setback. I don't think that... I mean, I'll certainly speak for myself, but others have already expressed. I mean, I don't think that that's our hang-up. What I'd like to pursue, relevant to Mr. Hennigan's feedback, is whether or not we have the authority to grant someone to modify a piece of property that they don't completely control.
Right, I agree.
And I think that's my hang-up on whether or not we're kind of leaning too far over our skis on that one and putting the town in any jeopardy. I think it's impractical to think that a single Butter or someone else that would have rights to this property would ever approach them and say, hey, I don't agree with this, I don't like this, don't do this, I want to use it. I think that's nonsensical, in my view. They're not going to make that argument to these good people. But I want to, again, and this may be, you know, too conservative for anyone's taste, but I want to make sure we have the authority to grant a single homeowner the authority to change a piece of property that they don't have full control over.
Right, I see your point.
And I think that, and that's my hang-up.
Okay. So I go back to your earlier comment that, granted, they just received a letter from the town attorney. We just received the letter from the attorney they sought opinion on. And you can see our concerns. I mean, we are trying to help as much as we can, but I think we have to side with the issues that the vice chair brought up. And I think that, you know, it's... The road is technically not owned by you to develop it, and we can't really give you permission to do so.
If I can follow up on that, because I know I said it to you in private, but I'd like to go on the record and suggest, given that the applicant's just received this information this evening, I mean, I'd very much like to give them an opportunity without prejudice to step back, take a look at this, digest this informa... If they chose, digest this information and see if there's something that we're missing, so that they might come back at a later date and reveal something that we're missing to give clearance to some of my concerns.
So I think if you understood what the vice chair is suggesting, is the possibility of requesting a continuation. We're not trying to... of requesting a continuation. We're not trying to delay a project or anything, but really, we're trying to make sure every, everyone is covered, I guess, if you will. So, given the new information that you have and we have, a continuation to next month might not be a bad idea. You can go through all this, you can filter through it, try to see if you maybe come up with a different plan for the driveway. Or, again, this is your opinion, we can vote on it this evening. It's really up to you, you're the applicant, so.
And before the comment, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm the one voice here. And I appreciate, you know, kind of turning your head to these topics, but I'd very much like the other board members to weigh in, challenge me, challenge, I mean, I'm in no way trying to delay this. And I would very much, just for the spirit of this, like to find a way to ease my concern and let them move forward. But I also see our role as being stewards of the town in this issue. And so, but I would very, I'd like the other board members to challenge my opinion, if so.
I do have one question for Mr. Maron. So, do you see this as an issue of notice to all those people holding rights to that paper street?
I see that as a potential element, but I don't know how, I don't think that's practical. I think that it would cost a lot of money, and I think you'd probably never ring fence everyone, based on some of the information that they've provided. I think that's probably an impractical process. But I think that legally, that's likely one of the boxes that would need to be checked, or at least attempted. I'm not asking them to do that. I'd like very much, I'd like to be wrong, and I'd like someone to come back and tell me that I'm being too conservative for their sake, and that there's another way to do this. But as I see what's before me in the brief, that's how I land.
If I may, through the-
Hang on, Mr. Cussy, go ahead.
What about upgrading the road 40 feet wide, past their property? I mean, 40 foot, gravel it, and have a driveway off of it?
If I may, through the chair, I think we have to go back to Mr. Maron's original comment. All that's before this board is putting the structure closer than 20 feet to the edge of the road.
Right, right.
It's not, the improvement of the road is not the location of the driveway. This board has no authority to approve or deny a driveway in that roadway.
Right, right.
So it's merely just whether they can build that structure within 20 feet of that paper street.
And I think that's what we need to focus on, and we're not-
I think we're getting off-
Any of that. So if we strictly discuss, remove all of these things that we just talked about, and we discuss just the structure and the setback, where our opinions are on that. So do we want to-
I'm still stuck on that one. I think the 10-point something, or 11-point something foot setback is problematic. Whereas the driveway, it's, reasonable clients could disagree, but, you know, that one's easier to let go. So it's the setback against that paper street that has me stuck.
All right. Mr. Cussy, given the new information, or the clarification?
I just, you know, yeah, I just, 10 feet's a lot to give up on a variance with setbacks. But each piece of property is individual that we look at, so. Yeah, I don't, so alls we have, we're not talking about the road at all.
Nope, we're just gonna go by the driveway, the addition and the setback. Mr. Chacolo?
I think I've alluded to the fact that I believe that the variance is a problem.
Okay.
And I think it's, you could put a structure up in addition, and there wouldn't be any problem. What's causing the problem is the paper road. That's why there's a variance being asked for.
Right.
So that you've got to consider that there's something there that exists, let alone the fact that I don't see anything in the topology that is there that would cause me to say, okay, they deserve consideration for a variance. It's a piece of land with a slope, it's probably a 12-degree slope from Ward Street to Lexington. There's trees, but there's trees on, that's got nothing to do with the topology, okay? The only reason we're here to talk about a variance is because the setback from point X, which is a paper road, is not 20 feet. Neither is the setback from the existing house to that, 20 feet. But it is a side, it's not the front.
Right. I know what you mean. Well, again, with Mr. Henigan, or Attorney Henigan's opinion, he's saying with both roads, they're both considered to be fronts.
They have to be by abbey there, even.
Right.
So who would make the decision on the road or driveway?
Talking about eliminating the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would, Land Court, I think Superior Court might also be able to do it.
Right.
And then that would just completely get rid of the road and essentially give them a 20-foot strip of land, tack onto their property. And people on the other side would also get the other 20-foot strip.
That's an awful big burden for the applicant to endure.
Awful.
To go, so Housing Court in Worcester is about two years behind, generally speaking.
I think that's where people go to Superior.
That's why people go to Superior, right.
And it's local.
I would agree with you that it's a heck of a burden, but with all the legal prowess that we have sitting here, maybe that they can say to me, "Nope, can't be done, Larry." But this can't be the first time that abutters, large or small group of abutters, that were not there when this was instituted, okay, over 100 years ago, okay, or close to it. This can't be the first time that we've run up against people who have sold two or three times, or whatever. There's got, if a zoning board has some leeway, the courts have to have some leeway in how those people can be notified or would be notified, whether it be a public posting, whether it be through the newspaper, whatever. And that could be the first step in this, saying, "Look, no abutters have a problem with this, okay? It needs to go." And I also do believe that the more, either abutters or public opinion weighed in on it, and when I say public opinion, I'm talking about people in the area, okay, where you are, weigh in on it. It's such a benign thing that's going on here, that they would have the sympathies of everybody. I would absolutely like to be the one that would vote in the affirmative on it.
So basically, the road has to get, or driveway has to get squared away first.
Well, again, we're not really going to be dealing with the driveway issue at all. We're going to be dealing with just the setback. And honestly, on a paper road, again, I'm just speaking for myself here, I'm not even speaking as the chair. It's a paper road that's been on the books since 1905, there's nothing that's been done with it. I mean, so is it technically even a setback?
I would say it is.
It is.
Because it's still a paper road, nobody's actually gotten that road eliminated yet.
Right. I mean, Mr. Chairman, you're articulating exactly my problem with this, is that, you know, in practicality, I don't think any one of us, and again, we all, like, the disclaimer is, "I'm not speaking for you, of course," but I don't think anyone has a problem with granting them relief for that space. But I think that there's an underlying legal matter here, with the authority of basically encroaching on a paper road, that we can't get out from under, because we don't have the authority to essentially just say, "Well, it doesn't matter," because unfortunately, it does matter.
Even if those people are unaware of their rights.
Right. Has anybody have, have the current abutters been notified of all this? And has anybody expressed a negative or positive opinion either way?
The person who shares National Island, the other side, I mean, he certainly would like to see this gone positive for him, too, so he can have access to that. You know, and the opinion we got from Ren was that in most cases, they divide it up from the middle of the road, 20 feet that way, 20 feet this way, and people have access, use of that land. I would love for the town to take initiative and take over the land, I'd love to pay taxes on it, buy it from the town and pay taxes on it. That just doesn't seem feasible.
Sure.
The other thing is, is, you know, you're talking about this and want to postpone it. I took down my deck in April, thinking that this was going to move right along. I came to the town hall here and talked to some people, mostly secretaries, and they said, "You know, we've done this before, it doesn't seem like it's going to be a problem." And I started moving along with that in mind. And all of a sudden, we get a big roadblock.
Well, again, and then that's the problem when you seek out an opinion of somebody that's not in authority to give one.
Right.
And I'm not criticizing, I'm just, you know, I mean, you've got to speak to the right people before you can ask if that's, you know.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman? Caleb, you would motion, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that the applicant stated that if it moved forward positively for them, then their neighbor would like to move, would like to take part and use the roadway. So that, I think that's town council's concern, is if these people improve this section, and these people improve this section, and these people improve this section, and then these people improve their section, then you have a roadway that's not built to town standards, and who's going to maintain that road? Who's going to plow it? Who's going to take care of it at that point?
That's the other issue, too, is when you come to that, we have a lot of private roads that people have issues with in town, because they don't get properly maintained.
And then once that, once those four properties improve that roadway, so it's passable, there's thousands of people that could use that roadway. And then it's a liability to the town, because it's not built to town standards. And, but again, this is just about the setback to that road, and whether they can meet the mandatory findings.
Okay, so given all the information, I don't really think we're adding any additional value to this. Do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion to close.
So, when I just close the public portion of the hearing, that's just so the boards can kind of, we can kind of discuss amongst ourselves, I can't take any more feedback. It's part of the process that we go through. So I'm going to go around the horn one more time, just find out, kind of get a general idea. Mr. Cussy?
I'm just stick with the town council.
Okay. Mr. Chacolo?
I'm going to stick with what I've previously said about, and this is strictly on the variance. You aren't holding the vote right now, or you are?
No, I'm just asking for, if we have any other further additional discussion to-
No further comment. No further comments.
Okay. Mr. Maron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I feel, although it's not an unusual spot for me to be in to spark a fair amount of discussion, I feel responsible for the roads that we've gone down. No pun intended for this application. I would like, given the new information that's been provided to the applicant, to give them an opportunity thoughtfully, to see if they wish to step back and see if there's a different avenue that they could take, seek some additional guidance, and give them an option to withdraw without prejudice and postpone. If, that would be my advice to the applicant. This evening, if we were pressed to a vote, with everything before us, I would also stick with Mr. Henigan's, as he backs this board in his opinion. Unless any additional information came forward, I wouldn't be supporting this.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
I initially didn't support Mr. Henigan's conclusions, but Mr. Maron pointed out a section that I had completely glossed over, and now I agree with his conclusion.
Okay. All right, so do I have a motion to open the public hearing again, then?
Make the motion open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So you've heard the discussion. I think you know if we went to a vote this evening, where it would probably go. I think Mr. Maron is offering some sound advice, that if you were taking the new information, it gives us the opportunity to, give you the opportunity for a continuation, sort through the information that you received this evening, come up with a alternative means of answers to the questions, I think, or to unearth some new information that might help you get through this. I just, again, if it was my vote, I would vote in favor, but I am only one vote on the board, and obviously, the others have different opinion. I have a great deal of respect for Mr. Henigan's legal knowledge and advice of the board. He's never really steered us wrong. And again, this paper road just makes it a little complicated for us to give a setback of, we're basically splitting that setback in half, is really what it comes down to. Three feet, five feet, you know, that kind of thing, we've kind of granted and not really worried about it too much. But when you're talking about cutting that in half, it's kind of a substantial amount. Looking at it on paper, it really doesn't make a difference. But again, it's because you have that issue in front of you. Maybe you'd want to consult with your, you know, bring all this forward to your attorney again, and see if there's some kind of a dissenting opinion that might help. I'm not really sure. So given that information, do you have a request or motion, or what you would like to do?
Are there choices?
Well, there are, but I mean, I think we've been fair enough to kind of let you know where it might go, and, you know.
They're absolutely-
We're trying to help you. I don't want to see you get, you know, any more financial burden, and given the circumstance of the project, you know, you could walk out of here empty-handed tonight and won't have, if we vote this evening, whichever way it goes, you can't reapply for the board for, what is it, is it two years? Caleb, or you?
Yeah, if I may, through the chair, just explain the process to the applicant. So if you were to receive a negative vote tonight, you could not reapply for two years unless your application was considerably different. The board would have to acknowledge that it was different before they voted to approve or deny. You do have the ability to withdraw without prejudice. That way, you could reapply, or you could ask for a continuance and come back next month.
So withdraw without prejudice means that you could go, it could take, you could come back in the spring, let's say. If we gave you a continuation, we could do it up to, you know, it could be next month, it could be January, which still is going to put you into springtime work. So again, I can't influence you either way. I think, just so you understand what it is, if you withdraw without prejudice, you've got to reapply, come before the board again. If you continue, you can keep this particular hearing open, go seek more legal opinion, try to get some more clarification, you can come back earlier, like next month, right away, first meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I owe you an apology, because as you were explaining before Caleb spoke, I interrupted you.
That's okay, we go back and forth all the time, I don't worry.
Fair enough, but I didn't want, but no disrespect intended. But you do have choices, sir. So you have two choices. You, one, can request a vote this evening, or you can take one of the options that was explained, to give you an opportunity to step back and rethink your application. It's not, and as I've done a fair amount of talking this evening, it's not my intent, believe what you will, it's not my intent to not see you go forward here. I'd just like to make sure that it's done in such a way that there's no risk for the town, which I see that that's my role. I'm just one volunteer. But I also want to see you successful and not put yourself in a bind. And so that's my intent. But you do have those two choices this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So with that being said, I mean, would that be something you'd be interested in? What do you want to do?
I think the continuance is the best idea. If in fact, we try to accumulate some more information, and we don't have it by the next date that you set, can we postpone that?
Yes. So the board has the authority to continue. We would open the hearing, like we did to the first one this evening, open the hearing, request a continuation, acknowledge everything publicly, and then close that hearing again, and that could be extended to January, or whatever it might be.
So that's what we'd like to do.
Okay. So the applicant is requesting a continuation. The next meeting actually officially is December 19th. So they'd be requesting the first meeting, which will be December 19th meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the majority application request?
I'm going to make that motion to accept the request, but I would like, Mr. Chairman, for you to bring officially one of the alternates forward. I don't think, I don't think a supermajority is needed, but I do want to respect that they're here, and let's bring one of them forward.
Sure. So because of the attorney's office you sought out, one of the members of the board is actually a partner in- is actually a partner in that law firm.
Yes.
So she recused herself and left, that's why. So we have alternate members here for a reason. So what we do is we bring Mr. Jones up to vote on it, just so you understand how the process is. So we have the five seating members and two alternates. So since Ms. Roach left, we'd bring Mr. Jones forward. He'd be voting on your hearing for this evening. So just so you're aware.
I will second the motion by Mr. Maron.
Okay.
And you have brought him forward, then.
Correct. Okay. So let's just go around, and we'll just do a roll call vote. Mr. Cusi?
I'll go--
Okay. So you accept the request. Mr. Chikolo?
I second the motion.
I know, but I'm just going through this because this might get complicated.
Affirmative.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Jones? And I vote yes. So you have your continuation to the December 19th hearing. Given all that information this evening, you can hopefully filter through that and find some type of relief for yourself. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Please be patient. I understand sometimes--
It's going to be illegal.
--it gets a little complicated, but we'll do everything we can to try to help you get through this as much as we can. Okay. Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to close the 7:10 hearing?
Motion to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we took care of the minutes of the meeting, and we took care of the signatures required. Does anyone have any new business to attend to?
None.
None? Okay. So one thing I will bring up, just in case there's actually, is anybody at home, we have a zoning bylaw review committee that is lacking members. So if anybody's interested in volunteering for the community, having an impact on certain things like we just saw this evening, if you could reach out to the town hall, specifically the building department, and maybe you could volunteer and come and help us out, get some of these crazy old zoning bylaws off of the books and straightened out.
What later in the week is--
It's various. We meet, we try to meet once a month. It's been kind of sporadic with the holidays and the summertime and, you know. But usually, once a month, we try to address what the town brings up first, and then we go back and we kind of get into the old business, and we're just digging through page by page. And, you know, these are the things that come up. Setbacks, driveways, additions, garages, basketball hoops, you know, old roads that are on since 1905 that nobody's ever addressed. And nobody knows, there's probably 50 or 60 of these roads in town, but they don't come up until somebody wants to do something with them. You know, so that's really what the problem comes.
Right.
Okay. So with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.